Good evening. We'll call the Tuesday, February 21, 2012, meeting of the Iredale County Board of Commissioners to order. And this evening, I'll call upon Mr. Pope, our attorney, to lead us in our invocation, please, sir.
Let us pray, please. Holy and gracious Lord, we pause for a moment before we start the people's business to acknowledge you, to thank you, and to ask your continued blessings on us. You've given us so many blessings, so many that it's too tedious to enumerate. We're particularly blessed in Iredale County to have public servants, both elected and appointed and retained, who are honest and who work for the best interests of the citizens. And we appreciate that, Lord. We also acknowledge, Lord, that there are many people in our county who lack food, or clothing, or shelter, or other necessities of life. Be with them, be with us, and give us the wisdom to know how to, both collectively and individually, help those people. Be with those other people in the county who have health needs, or who are dealing with addiction, or who have family issues. And be with this Board of Commissioners as they deal with this agenda. Give them the wisdom and judgment to know what decisions are correct in the best interest of the citizens, and give them the courage to make those decisions. Amen.
If you would, join us in the pledge of allegiance to the flag of our country.
(Inaudible).
Mr. Smith, are there any adjustments from the staff this evening to this agenda?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. We have a request that I'd like to add under the main agenda from the sheriff's office, and I would recommend putting this as Memo 4A, which would be inserted between D and E. And the second item is a closed session. It's a legal issue, which is addressed under Statute 143-318 dot 11A 3.
Okay. Are there any adjustments to this agenda from any member of the board this evening? The floor is open for a motion for adoption of this agenda.
Motion to approve.
With the amendments.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Motion for adoption of this agenda comes from Ms. Griffith. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We're specially honored this evening to have the opportunity to adopt a resolution in appreciation of Dr. Douglas Eason, retiring president of Mitchell Community College. I don't believe Dr. Eason is here this evening, so if you would indulge me, I'll read this resolution. It says, "Whereas Dr. Douglas Eason, President of Mitchell Community College, has announced his retirement effective February 29, 2012; and whereas Dr. Eason named the 23rd president of Mitchell College, or the 3rd president of Mitchell Community College assumed its presidency on July 1, 1990; and whereas Dr. Eason has been a crusader for the North Carolina Community College system, the nation's 3rd largest system, as he has continually fought to uphold the goal of providing a superior workforce; and whereas Dr. Eason has been instrumental and a positive force in developing affordable and high-quality programs geared to meet the lifelong needs of Iredale County citizenry; and whereas Dr. Eason's impressive and honorable career at Mitchell, the college's enrollment and physical space more than doubled; and whereas Dr. Eason has helped during his 21 years of invaluable leadership at Mitchell to create and champion an acclaimed educational environment appropriate for the 21st century and beyond. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Iredale County Board of Commissioners hereby express their sincere appreciation and deep gratitude to Dr. Douglas O. Eason for his dedicated and highly distinguished service to the citizens of Iredale County; and be it further resolved that this resolution be incorporated into the permanent minutes of the Iredale County Board of Commissioners in order for future generations to recognize and know about the impact of Dr. Eason's immeasurable achievements and accomplishments. This the 21st day of February 2012 of the Iredale County Board of Commissioners." And so I'm going to make sure that this goes back to our county manager, and he presents it to Dr. Eason at his earliest possible convenience. Okay, I see no appointments before the board this evening, and I know of no public hearings, so we'll move to administrative matters. And Mr. Smith, it's all yours.
Thank you. Memo number 1 is a request from the Emergency Communications Department for approval of Budget Amendment Number 32, and Tracy Jackson is going to present this.
Good evening. I'm here on behalf of Dave Martin, who's under the weather tonight. And David has submitted a request for Budget Amendment Number 32. This would appropriate fund balance from the Emergencies Telephone Fund for the purpose of installing a fiber connection, this is a fiber optic connection, between the Emergency Communications Center and Statesville Police Department. This would basically serve two purposes. This would give us a backup communication center if there was an emergency or some other reason that we had to leave the current primary communication center. And it also helps to get us ready for the next-generation 911 technology, which will be installed in the near future. We'll be sending out a request for proposals on that equipment in the near future. But in order to prepare for that, we have to have a good communication link from one center to the next. David, just to give you a little background on this, looked at several different options. In terms of cost, what he's proposed has come out to be the best option, even though it has a little more cost on the front end. This fiber optic connection, because of the proximity from our current 911 center to Statesville PD, is actually just kind of a short hop, where if it was, for example, going from Statesville to Mooresville PD, it'd be impossible to do because of the cost. One of the unanticipated costs that we would run into if we did not do this fiber link would be using somebody else's equipment, basically. We'd have to use AT&amp;T's phone lines, or some other way to get the communications across to Statesville PD. So what this does is allows us to have our own direct link. We pay for that one time, and then we don't have to pay a telephone provider a monthly fee for years to come. So that's where the savings comes in.
Mr. Jackson, I sit in one meeting between the gentleman from the state who evaluates ECOM centers, and Mr. Martin, I believe you were at that meeting, weren't you? When the issue came up that we didn't lose points, but we didn't gain a whole lot because we didn't have a backup system, does this completely deal with that issue?
I'm not sure what that issue was. I mean, we've had a backup system in place for years.
Well, this was a, excuse me, this was a backup system as far as powered, it's power backup at some of our relay stations. I mean, does this short-circuit all of that, or does this piggyback on top of it, I guess is a better way?
This enhances that, basically. What it'll do for us, it just gives us a greater redundancy in terms of being able to have more reliability. And also, the bandwidth is a lot larger by using fiber optic. If we were to use some existing lines that we have, there wouldn't be as much bandwidth, and we'd have as much capability to send large amounts of data. So that helps us in that respect. And as far as what you're talking about, David did mention that there is a possibility of improved APS availability, which is Automatic Protective Switching, and that helps in the redundancy. So I believe that kind of, in a roundabout way, addresses your question in terms of that redundancy.
Yeah. The gentleman said they didn't really expect people to have that 100% covered. There was the impression out there, and some folks in emergency services, that they did, but they don't because this cost prohibited. And best way to do is incrementally, and it looks like that's at least one step toward doing that.
And we may be talking about two different things. This is for telephone, this is strictly the 911 telephone side, answering side, and not the radio side.
Okay.
Just to clarify that.
Yeah, I think we are.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we are.
The 35, the 33,000 annual savings, we're not spending that money now, or are we spending that money now?
We aren't spending that amount right now. What we're, we are spending an amount to lease those lines, if you will, for communications purposes, but there were being increased costs to send larger amounts of data across a bigger pipe, if you will, or through a bigger pipe. Because what we're doing is laying the groundwork for this future next-generation 911 technology, which is going to require us to be ready to receive and send to our backup centers a lot more data because of people with smartphones and all that technology that...
What I'm getting at is, is we're not saving anything out of our budget, this is just a less costly option.
It's a cost avoided in the future, basically.
Okay.
Now, we may be saving a certain amount because we won't be leasing lines that we're leasing now, we'll have a direct link, but I can't tell you what that amount is. Does that make sense?
Sure.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions, Mr. Jackson? If not, floor is open for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve Budget Amendment Number 32.
Motion for approval from Vice Chairman Norman. Any discussion on his motion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
The next item that we have is a request from Donna Campbell, the Health Director, for approval of Budget Amendment Number 33, and this is Memo Number 2.
The North Carolina Department of Public Health has received a community transformation, sorry, grant funding, and that's to give grant funds to regional health departments. And our funding is to be used to implement policy and system changes that are related to tobacco-free living, active living, and healthy living. And what has happened is, the funding is coming down to our region, and the region will get $400,000 a year for five years, and of that, Iredale County will get $27,430 per year to help fund a health, an existing health education specialist that will work on these different areas that are required in the grant. These are areas that are already identified as areas of need in our county through our community evaluations, and this will allow us to be able to have funding for someone to work on those required programs. We are asking that we be able to get approval to apply and accept the grant funding for the Community Transformation Grant. It had a very rapid turnaround, and it was done before we even had a chance to get here. We will be taking it to the Board of Health on Thursday night, and so the final approval will be contingent on their approval at Thursday night's meeting.
Okay. Any questions? Ms. Campbell? Ms. Campbell, if we vote no, then does that money split up amongst the other counties?
Yes, it would be.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Campbell, you said this will be done by an existing health education specialist position?
Yes.
So we're not hiring anybody new?
No, we will not be.
Okay. Okay, any other questions? If not, floor is open for a motion. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval for the Health Department to request and apply for and accept the Community Transformation Grant Funds. Okay. Motion for approval from Mr. Mitchell. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thanks, ma'am.
Our next item is a request from Yvette Smith with the Department of Social Services for approval of Budget Amendment Number 34, and this is Memo Number 3.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The Department of Social Services has received some additional allocations that I would like the board to receive and recognize tonight. In the Crisis Intervention Program, we received $658,355. In the Low Income Energy Home Assistance Program, we have received $59,252. And in the Domestic Violence Program, $334.
Okay. Any questions, Ms. Smith? There's no local match on this?
No, there are not.
Okay. All right. If there's no questions, floor is open for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, motion to approve Budget Amendment Number 34.
Okay. We have a motion for approval from Vice Chairman Norman. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to turn the next two items over to Mike Phillips with the Sheriff's Office, and this is, these are Memo 4 and 4A.
The first item is a request to approve the, a contract with Securus, who is the phone provider at the jail. I think they also provide some phones throughout other buildings in the county. Actually, they're updating the equipment. We'll have some online capabilities as far as the officers being able to set privileges of the inmates by online, and the inmates and their families will also be able to purchase time and deposit phone account money online for the inmates to use the phones. It's a three-year contract, and we're asking for that to be approved.
Okay. Any questions?
They are the ones that already provide our service.
Okay.
It says here we earn about 66% commission from the sales generated. Do you know what that amounts to each year from phone use by the inmates?
I don't.
That's interesting.
Will this be at the downtown jail and also up at the prison camp?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, any other questions? Not, floor is open for a motion. Mr. Chairman, move for approval. Motion for approval from Mr. Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
The next item that I have is a approval of a Budget Amendment to recognize $25,000 of seized funds to be appropriated to crime prevention.
Okay. Are there any questions? Floor is open for a motion.
Motion to approve Budget Amendment Number 35 to recognize $25,000 in seized funds and appropriate for crime prevention.
Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Captain Phillips.
Thank you. The next item is a request from the Solid Waste Department for the awarding of a scrap tire disposal contract to New River Tire Recycling, and Ben Stike Leather is going to make that presentation.
Good evening. We're here tonight to ask that you award a contract for our scrap tire disposal and processing to a company out of Hillsville, Virginia, called New River Tire Recycling. We went through an RFP process, and they actually presented a proposal along with the company that we're currently with, US Tire, out of Concord. They won that proposal process, and we'd like for you to award that contract to them.
It looks like they've been in business for a relatively short period of time, and your research shows...
They had references from Catawba and Wilkes County. We contacted both of them, and they gave very favorable recommendations for the company. We went up and visited the location in Hillsville, Virginia, just to make sure that it seems sound, or operated in a formal, a former textile plant up there, and the operation seems very strong, in my opinion.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? What are they using the rubber for when they shred?
It goes into various products. Right now, the two main products that they produce is for astroturf, if you've watched a football game, when a player stops, you'll see black come up behind them. It's actually ground rubber from the tires. And also, they're going to start to produce colored mulch. They'd like to get into, it's called tire-derived fuels, factories actually burn tires to generate power at their plants, but as of right now, they haven't gotten into that market, but they would, they're going to explore that.
Using a lot on playgrounds.
It is the...
Sliding boards, swing sets where the kids won't get scraped up too bad. I was just in a machine shop this past week, over in Athens, a guy's making tooling to shred up these tires. It actually just chomps the tires into nugget size.
Yep.
And it's being used for fuel. And he said the guy that he's making that tooling for is running wide open with that.
Yeah, the process, it'll go through several grinders to get it down, and for tire-derived fuels, it needs to be about a two-inch chunk, so it can burn in a factory efficiently, and that gets a lot of the steel out of the tire as well, at that size, so...
I have a question. In the contract, we're going to go from a Concord company to a Virginia company, and part of the fee schedule, it says plus fuel surcharge. Are we exposing ourselves to paying extra for them to haul this stuff to Virginia as opposed to Cabarrus County?
No, sir. Actually, US Tire bases their fuel surcharge starting, and I believe it's $1.25 a gallon, and then it goes up incrementally. We've asked them to adjust that, and they've said that they wouldn't in the past, that that's how, it's a formula they use for all companies that they deal with, so it's going to start there. At the current gas price, we would pay 60 cents a mile fuel surcharge, it's a 100-mile round trip. With New River Tire, right now, it would be a 10-cent surcharge, and it's 160-mile round trip, so we would actually pay more fuel surcharge to take it to Concord right now than Hillsville, Virginia.
Good answer.
Okay. Any other questions? Hearing none, floor is open for a motion. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval of the contract with New River Tire.
One alibi question.
Pardon?
One question. The fuel surcharge, is their base fuel price the same?
The base, both of them are coming from the EIP website, and it's for the, for this market. Yes, sir.
Okay.
Sorry.
All right. So we have a motion on the floor for approval from Mr. Mitchell. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
The next item is a request from Robert Woody, the Parks Recreation and Facility Services Director, for approval of fee increases in recreational programs, and this is Memo Number 6.
Good evening, Mr. Woody.
The Recreation Department is requesting to increase fees for summer programs this year. It's been about three years since we've had a fee increase, and these fee increases are because we've gone to an online registration program that charges a percentage of the cost for the registration of the program, and also for the cost of fuel and activity costs that have gone up for the programs. If you're, in your memo, there should be a chart that breaks it down. If you look at the Outdoor Education Center, this is for outdoor education programs, the average increase is $3. The camp programs are a little bit more, $15. The overnight excursion camp looks like it has a large increase on that, but that's due to the program itself. The length of time from last year's program in the camp itself was about six days, and the length of time this year is about 10 days, so the fee there is based on the program itself. And then the adult program, which is our seniors program, the fee increase there is about $2 on average. And once again, it depends on the program itself, on the adult senior program, because a program, for instance, could cost them $10 if it's, like, looking at the quilts on the barns, or it could be even more if you go to, like, the Biltmore House for the seniors. So we had to pick an average there for that. And in keeping, trying to keep our programs where they cover their own cost, we saw a need for this fee increase this year, and requesting such.
Okay. Any questions, Mr. Woody?
Why would doing the registration online cost more than, I assume you're doing it now manually, where people receive checks?
Correct.
It would seem like you would, I understand if the program costs more, and you want to raise the fee, because the program costs more, I understand that, not a problem. My question is, is if we're doing it manually with checks and paper forms and people inputting this stuff, and now we're doing it where it's online, and they just pay with a credit card or something, it seems like we would have gained some efficiencies.
That's exactly what we're shooting for, is to gain some efficiencies there, and also convenience for the patron themselves. They can register for the program at home versus having to come into our office or to mail something in, so...
But when you pick up efficiency, you lose...
You do pick up efficiency, because right now, we use a program called Easy Camp, and it has to be manually entered every time somebody registers, and someone in our office has to manually enter all of that information. By going to an online registration, it will eliminate somebody in the office having to manually enter that information, and the patron who registers for the program will enter that information, and then we will have it in a database.
Mr. Woody, are these fees that the Actonet charges to use the credit card, debit card, is that the fee that they charge of 3%?
It's, no, it's a, it's a percentage, but I don't have the exact percentage. They give me an average when they come up with this.
So if a customer does use a debit card or a credit card, then the county has charged a percentage because that card was used, is that correct?
The fee comes off the top.
And so part of this increase that you're asking for is to cover those fees that would be deducted?
Yes. It's a convenience fee, basically.
You should be able to negotiate where there'd be no fee on the debit. Credit is hard to get them to do away with that. If you push them, they'll back off the fee for debit.
For debit card?
At least I ask. Most banks will do it for debit, they won't for credit. Okay. Any other questions? Not, floor is open for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve from Vice Chairman Norman. Any discussion on that motion? Not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
The next request is from Susan Blumstein with the Finance Department for approval of a contract with Martin Starnes and Associates CPAs to audit accounts, and this is Memo Number 7.
Thank you. This is the annual contract for Martin Starnes and Associates to complete our June 30, 2012 external audit, single audit, which is financial and compliance. It's $41,000. It is a $1,000 increase over the prior year. Each year, the feds come out with additional requirements, compliance requirements, that just take more and more field work. This is still much lower than a lot of counties, like-sized counties, for their annual audit, and I request the board to approve it.
Okay. Any questions, Ms. Blumstein? If not, floor is open for a motion. Mr. Chairman, move for the motion before us. Okay. Motion for approval from Mr. Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
May I answer a question that Commissioner Griffith asked a few minutes ago about the commissions on payphones? It's about $75,000 a year.
Okay, thank you. Okay. You're welcome.
Pretty good.
The next item is a request from the Tax Department for approval of the January 2011 refunds and releases, and there are no county commissioners' names on the list.
Okay. Floor is open for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve from Vice Chairman Norman. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
And the final administrative matter is a request for approval of the February 7, 2012 minutes.
Okay. If there are no corrections, the floor is open for a motion for approval.
Motion for approval.
Motion for approval from Ms. Griffith. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. That moves us to announcements of vacancies occurring on boards and commissions. We have one announcement of a vacancy on the Animal Grievance Committee. We have one announcement for the Nursing Home Advisory Committee. We have three announcements for the Historic Properties Commission. And let's see... We have appointments to boards and commissions, the Board of Equalization and Review. We have six appointments this evening, and you have your recommendations before you.
I'd recommend Mike Brotherton, Ken Pritchard, Al Jolly, Danny Allen, and Don Daniels.
Okay. Any other motion, nominations? I move we appoint these folks by acclamation. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. And I was speaking with Mr. Smith earlier, it would probably be a good idea if we had an alternate, so if you know of someone, we'll, we'll accept a nomination, and if you don't have anybody, Ms. Moore, if you would, put that on our agenda for next time.
Yes, sir.
I've written a couple of names I'm going to call here, if we can find somebody. Okay? Also, we need to vote on the chairman and the vice chairman, so the floor's open for nominations for those.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Mike Brotherton as chairman, Ken Pritchard as vice chairman.
Okay. Any other nominations? Hearing none, I move we close the floor to nominations and appoint these two by acclamation. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously.
I tell you, we owe that E and R award, our dedicate, our thanks, because they do a good job.
Yeah. Well, we have one of them here this evening. Thank you, Mr. Jolly.
I know, I was excluding him. No, they, they take a lot of heat that, that's not put over on us, it used to be put on the boards years ago, and so.
Yep.
And every one of them on that board is dedicated, and they really take that job at heart, so.
Yep, they do a good job. We have the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, one appointment.
Mr. Chairman, move we table that one.
Motion to table from Mr. Mitchell. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. We have the Troutman Planning Board, ETJ, one appointment this evening.
Mr. Chairman, nominating Mike Todd.
Mr. Robertson nominates Mike Todd. Any other nominations? Hearing none, I move we close the floor for nominations and appoint Mr. Todd by acclamation. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. We have your reminder list this evening.
If I could, we had a vacancy for Central Line Economic Development Commission, and I spoke with Robbie Carney, and he would be willing to serve on this commission, since that, that is aligned with his position as Executive Director of MSIDC.
All right. So we have a nomination, Mr. Carney, by Mr. Robertson.
That is correct.
Okay. All right, any other nominations? Hearing none, I move we appoint Mr. Carney by acclamation. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. This evening, under unfinished business, I have one item. I had the, our clerk make copies and lay this at each one of your desks, and this is a letter from Norfolk Southern, Mr. John Edwards, who is the General Director of the Passenger Policy, and this guy does, he is the, he's the head boss at Norfolk Southern, not to be confused with the.
Senator.
Senator Edwards, who said there were two Americas, and he lived in one where men cheat on their cancer-stricken wives, and the rest of us don't. But nevertheless, Mr., I'll just read this if I can, because I'm going to gloat for just a minute. He's writing this to Paul Morris, Deputy Secretary for Transit, North Carolina DOT, says, "Dear Paul, we have followed with interest and concern the recent campaign to introduce red line commuter service on the Norfolk Southern on rail line between Charlotte and Mooresville. Norfolk Southern stands ready to study with North Carolina DOT and catch the introduction of commuter rail service on the Norfolk Southern O-line. Although I cannot now anticipate the eventual conclusions of such a study, Norfolk Southern commits to ensuring that any study is based on, is based upon realistic operating financial and regulatory assumptions. Having said that, Norfolk Southern cannot support the current red line plan proposed by NC DOT for the use of Norfolk Southern's property. The red line plan is fatally flawed," where have I heard that before, "and based upon assumptions about the projected freight use for the O-line that are no longer valid. For these reasons, the current proposal is not feasible and does not constitute a starting point for further discussions. The joint partnership development process, therefore, is premature and will not lead to an accelerated construction schedule. If NC, NC DOT wishes to pursue some form of commuter rail on Norfolk Southern's O-line, Norfolk Southern will be ready to begin the study based upon updated freight operating assumptions and the correct financial, tax, liability, and regulatory models. This process is not short or easy, it will be expensive process for North Carolina Department of Transportation. We will work with you to ensure that all, that together, we can get it right." I will only say this, it sure is sweet when you're right. Okay, any public comment periods? County managers report.
Mr. Chairman, I do not have a report tonight.
Okay. At this point, I'll offer a motion, we go into closed session under General Statute 143-318-11A6 for personnel, and 143-318-11A3 for attorney-client legal privilege. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously.
There'll be no action as a result of our closed session, so I'll offer motion to adjourn.
No, sir. We got Tracy here on that issue.
Oh, I'm sorry, Tracy. Thank you. Tracy Jackson has some further...
Clarification.
Clarification, that's a good word. Thank you, Ms. Griffin.
You're welcome.
Clarification on the first memo of the evening. I was able to contact David Martin. There is a line between ECOM and Statesville PD that costs $204 a month. That line will stay intact even after this project is commenced. Basically, what the fiber optic line will do is link two telephone switches. And the switch at Statesville PD will be a redundant switch for the 911 center. So I hope that clarifies things a little bit. As far as Commissioner Robertson's question, it is a cost avoidance of $33,000 rather than actual savings.
Okay.
And the purpose of that sheet and the reason why we've asked for those questions to be answered is because there's a difference between if you're... To me, a cost savings means we're spending, we're writing checks today, and we won't be writing checks tomorrow. If we're doing a cost avoidance, basically, there are two options. Option A, which has one cost, and option B, which has a different cost. That's not a cost savings. That's just we're making one decision over another, okay? So cost savings is somewhere a budget theoretically could have been lowered with a budget amendment if there was a cost savings.
Thank you for the chance to clarify that.
Yes, sir. Thank you for your work on that. So now I'll offer motion to adjourn if it's agreeable to you, Mr. Mitchell.
Yes, sir.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.